Good evening, if we can stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everybody. Shannon Manaca, our board secretary, cannot be here tonight. Do I have a volunteer to be the secretary for this evening? Thank you, Alan. All right, we will move on first to our report of the chairman. And first up is a recognition of our 2021 Teacher of the Year, who is Teresa Guca-Heinz. So, do you want to say anything, Joe?
Absolutely, absolutely. It's my pleasure to recognize Teresa tonight as Monroe's 2021 Teacher of the Year. To receive this recognition is pretty special. This year, we received 285 total nominations for 108 different teachers in the district. So to call it down to one teacher truly speaks to Teresa's dedication to her craft. And that came out loud and clear from the nominations which we received from parents, teachers, paraeducators, and secretaries. Teresa got nominations from all those different stakeholders. Fellow teachers and parents say that Teresa is always learning, always teaching, always finding ways to make her students succeed. She thinks outside the box and tries all different ways to meet a child's need until the one that works is found, fostering independence, creativity, and kindness along the way. Words that kept coming out during the nominations were compassionate, patient, happy, kind, encouraging, respectful, humble, a great communicator, builds confidence, and my two favorites, which was a most loving and gentle soul. Her colleagues say she is the first stop where the foundation is planted, but like one of her parents says, I wish she could follow them all the way through. So it's my pleasure to recognize Teresa Guca-Heinz as Monroe's 2021 Teacher of the Year.
We have a little certificate for you.
Jack, do I try to get that socially distanced picture up there?
Yes.
I don't know why I'm smiling.
Yeah, me too.
It's like cheese.
All right, thank you so much, congratulations again. It's well-deserved honor. We will move on to our introduction of the 2021 Student Board Representatives.
Absolutely. And if the three representatives, if you ladies can just kind of come up right now, I'll introduce the three of you. And then, you know, to continue practicing social distancing, I've asked, you know, each of them will come up to the stand separately to give their reports. And then, you know, I told them they could have the night off. But I would say there's one familiar face there, but you can only see half of a familiar face there. But, you know, it's great to have Elizabeth Winnington, our senior Board of Education representative, back with us again this year. And like we always do, we have two other students, both juniors, so it's nice. We'll have some two-year continuity, Melanie Anthony and Sujah Srinivasan. So, very excited to have the three of them with us tonight. And I don't know who drew the short straw or long straw, but I figured it'd be you, Elizabeth. And you could flip your thing around if you want.
This is me. I just wanted to thank the Board of Ed for allowing me to return this year and for the wonderful opportunity. I love doing this. So first, I'll talk a little bit about robotics. 4478D, which put up a 202 skills store, and they are ranked fifth in the world and first in the United States currently. And as a member of 4478D, we're very happy with that score and we hope to further our rankings. And then I'll talk about the hybrid learning a little bit. I think it's going really well. There's a lot less stress from being in person and having constant tests, kind of having that day of staying online. And when we're in school, it feels very safe, social distancing in mass. Everyone's really happy to be back in school, even for just the two days that we're in school. And then the seniors took the SAT on Wednesday, September 23rd. I took the SAT and it was very fun and not boring at all. And then I'll end with sports. So our Massey volleyball team, our girls' team, had their senior night tonight, and they did win, leaving their record 2-0. Our girls' soccer team is 0-2, and our field hockey team is 1-1. And now Melanie is going to talk about swimming.
Hello, my name is Melanie Anthony. And firstly, I would like to thank the Board of Education. And as a member of the Massey Swim and Dive Team, tomorrow is our first meet, and it will be held at the Massey Pool, and it's against Joel Barlow. And this Friday will be senior night, and it will be the meet against Weston, so we're very excited for that. And as far as hybrid learning goes, it's pretty smooth, and it's really nice to see teachers in person. And, yes, now Sujah.
First of all, I'd also like to thank the Board of Education for this opportunity to be a student representative. As a member of the Color Guard Team, we have started our practice season, and we're looking forward to the announcement about our competition season, which will most likely be virtual. Sophomores and juniors will be taking the PSAT next Wednesday, October 14th. And on the topic of hybrid learning, I would say that most students are very happy to be back. It is definitely one of the better solutions, given the situation. Most students also like block scheduling because it definitely gives us more time. I would say that some of the cons at times are the Wi-Fi at the school. It makes the connection a little fuzzy, a little bit difficult. And then, some students do have a few complaints about the Wednesday schedule of all of our classes. I would say that they believe it's a little bit hectic and a little bit chaotic. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Sujah.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Melanie, thank you so much, and welcome to being our representatives this year. We look forward to hearing from you, the three of you. We will move on to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve as presented? Thank you, Jerry, and second, David. Joe, do you want to discuss the two retirements?
Yeah, we have two retirements, both occurring at the end of this calendar year. Bill Girasco and Amy Kaminsky. Amy has been a, I think she started in the district as a para right around 2000, and she's been a secretary at Massey. And most recently, she's been a secretary at Monroe Elementary for the past few years, helping support our special education program there. And the other one is, you guys all know Bill. Bill will be retiring, I think, the end of December, brings up his 35th year in the Monroe Public School. So I definitely wish Bill the best of luck. I know he's had, you know, with everything that was going on this year with the school opening, he's had a lot of stuff on his plate, and, you know, he continues to deliver. So we wish both Bill and Amy the best of luck in retirement.
Wait, thank you. Do I have any further discussion on this? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, motion passes. We will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons. Does anybody have reports this evening? David?
Donna, the safety committee met on Zoom last Thursday, the October 1st. Main thing that was discussed was updating the all-hazard plan as required for the state. So the individual schools are working to that. They're going to get everything to Jack and go from there. Everything else was routine, everyone's doing their drills, so that's it.
Thank you so much. Anybody else? Alan?
I'm on the CES committee, but I can't attend.
Okay.
They meet at like 3 o'clock on Mondays.
Mondays now?
Yeah, I have two-hour staff meetings after work on Monday, so there's just no way.
So 3 o'clock, Mondays?
Yeah, I think it's like once a month.
Okay. Joe, can you just get the information?
Here we'll.
And once we have the final information, I don't know. Are they doing in-person, or how are they doing it, Alan?
The last one was virtual. Some people did it in-person, showed up to Trumbull, but I think most people were opting for the virtual.
I think they have a setup there where they could be a hybrid, where they could have some people there and some people virtually.
All right, if you can find Donna, let me see. When's the next one, do you know?
I don't know.
Okay. We can see about getting, it's such a terrible time, 3 o'clock.
Yeah, it's not a good time.
It's always been an issue, right?
It's always been an issue with having somebody be the liaison for that because it's 3 o'clock in the afternoon time of week. I mean, it's a very difficult time for anybody who works or has children or anything, so. Anybody else liaison our committee reports this evening? All right, hearing none, we will move on to public participation. If anybody's on the phone and would like to participate?
Q and A session has started.
All right, if anybody on the phone would like to participate, you could state your name and address for the record. All right, hearing none? I'm sorry, Paul? Who wants to participate, or who's on the call?
Hi, I'm here.
Hi, can you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Marie Blake, and my address is 359 Wheeler Road. I am here tonight again as the Monroe Education Association President. I want to discuss the reinstatement of clubs and activities and stipends. I understand that the clubs have been reinstated at Massey and at Jockey Hollow at the cost of approximately $92,000. I have been told that they are able to run because of numerous savings that occurred during July and August of this fiscal year, not last year, this year. My understanding is that the savings came from not needing summer custodial help, summer IT help, and from transportation costs. By reinstating clubs, you will be compensating some teachers at the expense of the members of all the bargaining units. Clubs, extracurricular activities are just that, they're extra. They should be paid after we meet all of our other financial obligations. So I am asking that as a board, you entertain the thought of putting the extra savings aside to make a good faith effort to pay back the members of all the bargaining units. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else on the call? All right, we will move on to the report.
Q and A session is over.
Hang it up, Paul? No?
Okay, we will move on to our report of our acting superintendent.
Thanks, I just want to talk a little bit about today was the first full day for our in-person, I'm sorry, our first full in-person day at our elementary schools. And I have to start first by thanking all of the volunteers who helped out to put up desk barriers for all the elementary schools over the weekend. The barriers came in Friday afternoon, probably around 2:30. I think the first ones came in at Font Hollow. We worked until probably close to 10 o'clock that night, and then got started again Saturday morning and finished at Font Hollow as the last of our three elementary schools, probably around 5:30. So I really, you know, and I'm going to mention people individually that helped out at all the schools because people gave significantly of their time to employ this additional mitigation strategy for our students to come in, you know, in the safest environment we can provide. So in addition to our three principals, Bruce Kelly and Lee, Monroe Elementary had teacher Lori Ostroff, Barbara Monaco, the school nurse, Jacob Moreno, a Massey junior, Kevin and Fran Welch, Lisa and Sean Peterson, Julia Strong, and their custodians, Mike and Temo. Font Hollow, Jack was at Font Hollow Friday, he was at Stepney to start Saturday, and then back over to Font Hollow on Saturday to help finish up over there. Mike Crowley and his wife Dana, Mark and Aaron Swors, Ian Lowell, Mike Ansis, and Ron was over there, and actually Jen and Mike Porcell with me over at Stepney and went back over to Font Hollow to help them finish up. At Stepney, we had teachers Laura Lawler, Michelle Vanderhayden, Diane Gaber came over and helped from here at Massey, Jim Stozel, Darlene Fensor, Jen and Mike Porcell again, like I said, and Marissa Memley. And then, because I know how to show my wife the greatest Friday nights and Saturdays, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention my wife is coming to help out Friday night and all day Saturday, so.
Date night?
Big night, big night in the Kanza household.
You have big spending challenge.
Yeah, yeah, I know how to show a lady a good time.
Barrier.
She's going to kill me.
Bring one home.
In terms of today, you know, for the staff, this was technically our third first day of the year, but the principals reported that there was a sense of excitement with everyone being together for the first time in a long while. The kids were thrown off a little bit when they got there to see the extra PPE in the form of the desk shields. But, you know, like they do, they acclimated really quickly. The weather really helped out today, and it looks like it's going to continue to cooperate for the foreseeable near future. So we were able to do a lot of activities outside, lunch outside, you know, with more kids in the building. The more time we can get outside, the better. I have to say, drop-off and dismissal exceeded my expectations. I thought it was, I mean, drop-offs are pretty cut and dry. Pull up, drop the kid off, and get in, but dismissals, obviously, we got to make sure, you know, we're getting kids in the right cars. I think, you know, it took about 35 minutes for dismissals. Stepney probably provides the biggest challenge, whereas Monroeal has like a loop for the buses, and then they had a pathway for the parents. And Font Hollow has the same thing with the front and then the side entrance. Stepney has kind of like this crisscrossing pattern between the buses and the cars, so that was challenging. But Bruce and his team over there did a great job. Like I said, 35 minutes today. Bus ridership does seem to be up a little bit. Bruce estimated that close to about 50% of his kids seem to be taking the bus today. But we did notice there was more parents at pickup at Stepney than drop-off in the morning. Monroe Elementary had eight students that transitioned from full remote to full in-person. They did a really nice job, and they assigned a staff member for each of those eight students when they got there this morning to kind of walk them through their first class and whatnot. Probably the best comment of the day that I got was, you know, came from Kelly. She said, you know, some of the teachers remarked that they had the best lesson of the entire year today. Definitely goes a long way to have most, if not all, the kids in one spot. So, once again, you know, one thing that's coming through loud and clear, our teachers are working incredibly hard. It's amazing if you walk into an elementary, actually K-12, and you watch the attention that they're trying to pay to the kids in front of them with the kids online. It's incredibly difficult. I know I've asked a lot of them, and I want to really extend my sincere appreciation to them for making it happen today. So I had on the first full day.
Anybody have questions for Joe on that? I think it went well, I mean, from a parent's perspective. Alan?
That's what I was going to ask, how the parents.
I mean, all the ones that, all the ones that I was opening the doors to at Stepney were pretty happy today. They seemed pretty happy.
As a Stepney parent, I can say it went incredibly smooth compared to the first couple of days where we had issues, and for the first time being everybody in, I was incredibly impressed with how it went today. So I think it, you know, everybody's done an incredible job, you know, recognizing the challenges we face and then addressing them.
Thanks, Joe.
Same at Monroeal, I mean, from her getting off the bus this afternoon and being so excited to now see the rest of her friends with only having to see half. I mean, she had, she was just beaming and had such a great experience today. And I mean, I will say that at least her teacher, at the end of the day, sent out a class dojo of pictures of how the day went, and it was pretty impressive on what the setup of the classroom looked like because he sent a picture of the classroom and also sent a picture of the kids outside having, I don't know if it was snack or lunch this afternoon, but he sent both. So it was pretty impressive to see both of those photos, so.
That's awesome.
Sounds like a big score with social, emotional, mental health.
Yeah, getting the kids back, the better.
I mean, I don't have, my son's not in elementary, but I did see some of my friends' kids, and I mean, the smiles on their faces just said it all. They lit up when I was like, how was your first day today? Oh my God, like, they were like so ecstatic, that, it was so nice to see.
That's great.
They needed it, yeah.
Yeah.
Let's hope it holds.
Absolutely. Next up, I have the enrollment update. This is, these are our official October 1 numbers. I'm passing around the elementary numbers as well. If you look at what's in the board pack, just a couple of things jumped out to me as I looked at it. You know, up 47 kids district-wide, 31, that's kids that are in district, so 3,171 compared to 3,123 last year on October 1st. If you look at the cohorts, so if you look at like last year's K and this year's 1, and last year's 1 and this year's 2, the kids that kind of travel, you'll notice that every cohort of students is up, with the exception of 8th grade to 9th grade, which is very normal that you have a little bit of a drop there because you have kids that go off to, you know, might go off to private schools or tech schools or whatnot. And even that, the decrease from the 8th grade number last year to the 9th grade number this year is only five students. I mean, I know some high schools that lose, you know, 5% to 10% of their student body in the transition from 8th grade to 9th grade. So, I mean, five students is amazing. And I think it speaks to the level of education that kids get here in Monroe. You know, a couple of things jump out at me that, you know, keeping my eye on. One is the Stepney kindergarten number is 58, and, you know, whereas last year it was 75, it usually trends in the 70s. So I don't know if that's just an anomaly this year. And what I'm really concerned about is the number of parents who may have decided to forego kindergarten this year. You know, if you had a, especially if you have a child who's got a little bit later birthday, and you would have normally sent them, but, you know, knowing that the uncertainty that this school year was bringing may have kept them home. So, you know, that, you know, that's an area that we will keep an eye on, and we're going to have to come up with a plan to figure out, you know, next year when we're looking at kindergarten numbers at Stepney, trying to find out as soon as possible what that's going to look like. And then the other one is, and I talked about this last time, the number of students that were homeschooled this year. Again, I think that was a byproduct of parents, you know, not sure what this year was going to bring. So, you know, as compared to last year, we had zero kids homeschooled at this time, you know, 25 this year. So if we bring those 25 back in, you know, depending on how the numbers fall out, and that's my next job, is to figure out, you know, where those 25 kids would kind of fit into things. What I didn't have in the board pack, but what I did hear is I have the elementary breakdowns of class sizes, which have not changed too dramatically since we last spoke. And so they're there for you to take a look at. And I don't know if any, and I, all those are, you know, actual numbers now, whereas last time, I think I had projections for pre-K. That's our pre-K numbers as they stand today. But the, you know, we know, kids are going to turn three throughout the course of the year, so we anticipate that number, you know, pushing up close to 50 probably.
Joe, I'm noticing, you know, we always have this conversation about Font Hollow and how it's growing, and we talked about that last time too. But even though Font Hollow is obviously our largest elementary, except for first grade, we seem to be able to kind of keep the average class sizes in somewhat of a good range, although I would note, of course, first grade. At Stepney, we have the second and third grades that, you know, I don't know if there's enough there, obviously not for this year, but as we go into budget to add sections. I mean, if you look at these numbers going up over time, you know, if those 23s become 24s, and, you know, 23 in a fourth grade or 25, 25 in a fifth grade, even still, that's, you know, a lot of kids.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's any type of plan to watch these averages or to move, you know, like, you know, first grade at Monroeal has 16, and that would be 24 if you take away a section. I guess I just, those averages in the mid-20s are concerning.
Yeah, and it's tough, you know, as the schools get smaller, you know, it's tricky to, you know, Font Hollow is able to balance out the numbers more so because they have, you know, they have more sections there. So, and like you just pointed out, at Monroeal, where the school is smaller, you know, that class is 16, if you make it two sections, now you got two classes of 24 at the K level, which would be, that would be really difficult. So we always run into that. Alan?
Joe, are you anticipating, like, hiring for next year, an extra teacher?
I think we're going to have to keep an eye on this. I mean, we are going through the budget process right now. We've asked, you know, we've asked all of the principals to submit their budgets with, you know, with everything in unison, and then we've asked them separately to, if they have anticipation of FTE.
That actually hasn't gone out yet, but.
That will go out tomorrow. Yeah.
It's going to be a test.
Yeah. Okay. So, and we're going to have to keep a really close eye on that. And again, the 25 homeschooled, we'll be monitoring that all year.
Yeah, and plus, like you said, the parents that may be holding their kids back from going to kindergarten, there could be a big surge.
When do you open up kindergarten registration?
Oh, help me out.
Usually fast.
Is it February? That's what I thought, it was like January, February.
Can you open it up earlier, just to get an idea?
We could, I mean, I don't know.
Like, while we're still in budget?
That's actually, no, it's a good idea.
Yeah, and it'll just depend if people register that early.
Yeah.
Oh, I will.
But some people wait until like preschool gives them a recommendation too on what they think that their kids.
They do that pretty early now, though.
Do they?
Yeah, like, they have an idea, pretty much. At least my daycare does, preschool, a lot of them do.
Do we know how many four, five, and six-year-olds we have in town, approximately? Any way to get that information?
I don't know who would have that information besides a demographer.
We'll get it with the census. When the census data comes out next April, we'll get, we'll get everything. I mean, it just so happens that it's a census year, not that it happens everywhere, but.
I mean, the only other thing you can do is take a, you know, take a survey of the preschools in town, but, you know.
That's what I was going to say, you'd have to call the daycares the preschools to get an idea how many are in there.
Yeah.
Like, I'm trying to think of tiny treasures, how many in her class are kindergarten, will go into kindergarten, like, maybe 12, 14, something like that.
Yeah.
So you take that, but then, you know, you got home ones, you've got a lot of different stuff going on.
And not everybody goes in town, if the parent works in Stanford, maybe the daycares.
Yeah, there's kids, exactly. So you won't have a, you'd have an idea. But that's what I was thinking, if you could move it up a little bit.
I think we got to do something to try to capture that.
Because parents may know already, like, hey, I'm sending my kid, especially if they held them back, they'll definitely be able to, you know, get it going.
Yeah. Joe?
Joe, two things, I would assume the Jockey Hollow numbers on this includes them?
They do, they do.
For next meeting, could you give me a breakdown of Jockey Hollow like you did the elementaries? I have enrollment, I just want to know.
Yeah, it's a little tricky because both the middle school and high school, they have it.
I, I'm just trying to get a class count.
Yeah, I got you.
Just trying to get an idea of.
Yeah. It's a little bit longer.
I know, I know, I'm being a pain, again.
No, no, no. Anything else on the enrollment? I'm going to kick it over to Ron and then Darlene for budget and specialized.
All right, so it was actually number two on my list. It was number two on my list, but I'll jump to it first since you already started it. So the budget, fiscal year '22 department budget packs will be going out tomorrow. They're going to include unison instructions, FTE position change form, and capital budget submission request forms. Second thing I wanted to discuss, last year I was giving you financial updates every meeting. I haven't started doing that yet this year, and I guess my question is, I think that was new last year. Did you want to continue that practice? Or did you want to just, I'm looking at Nick, I guess. So, or did you just want to, I believe the prior practice was just to do monthly fund statements? So I guess I could, you know, I can do, you know, every meeting if that's what you'd like.
I think maybe every meeting for right now.
Okay.
Especially given the nature of what this year is, is gonna be like, um, with COVID and how that's gonna affect things.
Okay.
Because I think we need to be completely up to date every meeting as to where we stand, so that we can make decisions if that necessitates. And monthly maybe kind of.
Yeah, so my, my thought was to start with the first meeting of November to give you, uh, updates every meeting.
Okay.
Is that good with everybody? Does anybody want something different? That was just my opinion. Okay, so every meeting.
And that's, uh, that's pretty much it. Dar, you wanna touch on special ed?
It was listed on the finances first, so page thirty-eight in your packet has the, um, the accounts. So you'll notice some differences on the financial report on from last month, because the finance department asked us to encumber all of the money for programs and transportation that we know of, that we, that we know that we're gonna expend this year. So with the changes in student programs and, um, students who were brought back to district, and students who have moved into district this year with IP's, all of these, all of these accounts, uh, reflect what we knew as of October first. So this, I, I printed this on October first. So if you look at this, um, I know it looks like, you know, we've, we've already spent all of our money, but that's, um, they, the finance department put them into a hold fund for each of these lines, so that we, we take, I, I have a separate list with all of my students and, and the expenditures, all of the outside agencies, everything that we, um, we expend, so. So that, those hold funds are for these, um, these lines. So he has, um, finance department set up one for the outside agencies, for tuition, for independent valves, um, legal and preschool, well, not legal, because we, we're just doing month by month with the legal what we spend, so.
Darling, can I just interject real quick?
Yes, please.
So it's a, it's a, uh, it's basically, uh, the hold vendor that we set up last year for sped to encumber project, projected amounts within munis.
See, they look at you like I look at you when you talk finance. So, um, and the reason it's in a hold fund, I believe, is that some of them are predictions of what will be spent, because we don't have all the contracts yet. We know, we, we know about what we're, um, going to spend on students, and some of the programs, we still have a couple of programs that are, um, still being developed for students. So, um, and they will be, um, the way I understand it is when, um, we put in for those, um, POs, they will be taken out of that hold fund and, and, um, shown on these specific lines. Right?
Yeah, so they're, they're in the correct line right now, but they'll, they'll be removed from the hold vendor, the sp- uh, special ed hold vendor. And, and, um, when the actual PO is, is created, it'll be removed. So it won't be doubled up.
Can I just ask a clarification before we move on? So the encumbered column is for the special ed students in our district as of ten-one?
Correct.
Full stop. So any new special ed students that move into the district over the next however many months, the money that is remaining that is budgeted for those new students is what's in the available column?
Correct.
Okay.
And we do have a couple of estimates for students who have moved in and their programs have not been, they're, they're really not even in our enrollment yet. But we are having PPTs this month on students, so we did put some, um, money in there for.
And that's already encumbered?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
In the, in the hold fund.
Great.
Yes, yes. So if you, um, you just take a look at a couple lines that, um, stand out is, um, the tuition public is, there's still a hundred and sixty-three thousand, um, available. And that's because, if you remember, in January, we, we put some more money in because we had between, uh, December, I guess, when we presented, and January, before you finalized the budget, we, um, had some new students, and so we, we added some money in there. So we budgeted for those students of who we had in January. We brought back some students, a student moved during the winter, and we also have some remote learners, um, which, uh, you know, they're not taking advantage of our programs right now. So it, it is, um, our expenditures are down in that, in that line. And then, um, for transportation, the two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, um, same type of thing. Some of our students are, um, participating, they opted into the remote learning, um, and they, they did last year require special transportation. So we are going to have some savings, um, there. And that, that, of course, can change if students come back full-time. And then we also had, um, some savings with, uh, change in carriers. There was a pretty significant savings in the change in carriers this year. Okay? Any other questions on that?
Yeah, could I just, could I just make one suggestion perhaps? Um, I'm gonna pull a Jerry and ask you to do more work. Can, at the bottom of this spreadsheet, can we have just totals for the lines on the spreadsheet? So that we can like see the, like what each column totals out to?
Okay, but, um, but this is, these are not, remember, these are not all my lines.
So why are these lines being highlighted on your sheet and not all of your lines?
Because these, these are the ones that change continuously. Most of my other lines, I think I, I forget, we figured we counted last year, um, forty-something lines. Um, but most of them, you know, we, we, um, are able to budget, you know, pretty accurate, accurately for those lines, because they're things that we do every year. But these, these lines, um, involve changes with student programming. So that's, that, these are the ones that are, you know, forever changing.
Okay.
Okay?
Does anybody have any other questions for Darlene on that?
So then on page, um, thirty-nine is my enrollment update for special education. Again, you're gonna see a little bit difference from last month. The number of students reported at the end of last year, I believe it was at the, either the end of May, beginning of June, I don't know, we, we got, uh, crazy with those Zoom meetings, I don't know which one it was, but. Um, so four sixty-eight, if you could see that at the top, at the top, that's not labeled, that's what we, that was the last number we reported, um, at, at our board meetings last year. And then when you consider, um, we had twenty-nine students graduate. Last month I had twenty-four on the, uh, grid, and it was because, I'm sorry, I apologize, I can't stand speaking with this thing. It was because we did have some students who graduated late, they were, they were using, um, ESY and, um, to finish up some coursework. So, um, they were not counted in the June graduation list. So they, we do a June count to the state too, and they were, they were still on that list. And then, um, and then we had four students withdraw in, in June, so if you take that, um, the number was, um, four thirty-five. Last month I reported four thirty, I took that number from Power School, um, but it didn't, um, it didn't account for all students with special education services. There are students who are not reported by Monroe, because they have special programs. And they, they get reported, uh, to the state by their other programs. However, we are still financially responsible for them. So I believe it's best, and you can tell me if you want it directly, but I believe it's best that we include all of the students, um, in our accounts. So that, so this is a more accurate picture, and, you know, we'll just continue with this one. Questions, yes?
Is there any way to show, um, I know you can't kick too much away, but maybe, how many how many of the outplaced kids are elementary, middle, and high?
I can't, I mean, I have that information.
Is that something that you're sure?
I, I'm not, I'm not sure that I wanna put that on a, uh, you know, a grid. I think it, when you boil it, you know, you know, when you go down to that kind of level, it is, um, you know, you're kinda getting really close to reaching confidentiality. Any questions on, other questions on enrollment?
One quick question.
Sure.
Do you, like, is what we're seeing here, are we, uh, tracking with towns around us relative? Like, I know obviously a larger school district is gonna have more, yeah, but like as a percentage or?
As a percentage, we're, right now, um, we're just under fourteen percent, so, um, better than we were at the end of last year. Um, at the end of last year, we were, um, trending towards fifteen percent. Um, but the, again, the state, the state average is around fifteen percent, so we're just, you know, we're just under the state average. It's, it's, you know, everybody's pretty much in the same situation, all the districts, so. Okay, and then the last part of my piece was just efficiencies, and I just wanna mention that, you know, as we begin to plan for next year during this budget season, that we'll continue to build and improve, um, district programs that, um, can meet the needs of all of our students in the districts. Questions?
Thanks, Dar.
Joe, do you have anything else?
That was all.
We will move on to, um, old business, and we have up one, two, three, four, five, six, seven policies. This is our second review of them. Um, I did chat with Joe on Friday and discussed that these have been updated and changed as of, after our last meeting. So I just wanna first, before we go into the motion, is everybody good with those changes that have been made? Yes, Nick?
I just have, excuse me, I just have one question on the, um, is the capital plan one?
Which one number? Which policy number?
I guess it was thirty-one thirty.
Thirty-one thirty.
Go ahead, so we're, there we go.
So the superintendent, this is the third sentence, the superintendent in cooperation with the director of finance and facilities manager, shall prepare a five-year capital improvement plan which includes facilities will also be incorporated. So I guess the capital improvement plan will also be incorporated into the superintendent's budget proposal to the Board of Education implies that the board votes on this when we adopt our budget. So some of this was redlined out before, and now we're bringing it back?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So they're gonna, it's gonna be in the superintendent's budget, and then when we go to approve it, we're approving that whole budget package.
Yep, that makes, that makes sense, okay. And thank you for the, uh, you know, the, um, the thirty-one hundred, I think that's much clearer. And I think it aligns more with our, with what we actually do. Speaking of that, we also had the policy, I don't know if it was thirty-one sixty that we talked about, Ron, at our, at the last meeting about making, approving the financials means, remember the discussion last time?
So my understanding was, was you got, you wanted to vote on the transfers before they got put into the financials?
Right. So we'll be voting as a board on the transfers, and those will be reflected in the next board meeting's financials?
Correct. So next board meeting, I'll have some transfers for you?
Okay. Yeah.
And, and they won't be incorporated into the financials until?
It'll be the next one.
All right, so let's get a motion on the table and we can further discuss. So a motion to approve policy numbers thirty-three twenty-six, thirty-one hundred, forty-one eighteen point two-three-seven, forty-two eighteen point, well, it's two-three-seven says it again, but it's point, uh, I think that's a mistake, right? We only have one?
No, one.
Cause it's down on the bottom, it shows forty-two eighteen point two-three-seven twice. Oh, no, forty-one eighteen point two-three-seven, sorry, forty-two eighteen point three-two-three-seven, fifty-one, forty-one point eight, thirty-one thirty, and thirty-one sixty as presented. Thank you, Nick, have a second. Thank you, Christine. All right, so those are the couple of things that we fixed. Is everybody else good with everything else that, that's in there? All right, so, um, so all in favor? Thank you, motion passes. Um, we will move on, um, does anybody have anything else, cause that's the end that I have? Jerry?
Yeah, I've, I've got to, um, I, I know we, we never answer a comment during the meeting, but Joe, I would like you to, um, give us a layout of the clubs and the activities, cause, you know, it's a song I'm gonna sing in front of you guys forever. We have an obligation, I'm not forgetting about it, I never do. So I would like you in accounting of where that money came from, I think it's a valid question, I don't expect an answer now, but I would like an answer. One more thing, I'm not holding your feet to the fire, Joe, cause I don't know this ans- answer either. In a perfect world, which I know it's not, when would you and the globe think we would even consider doing middle school full-time?
Tomorrow.
The, uh, I don't know, I mean, you know, when I.
That's the answer I gave.
Yeah.
That's, your answer is the answer I just gave.
Yeah.
And I don't know either, I wasn't trying to put you on the spot, Joe. I don't think there is an answer.
Yeah, I mean, you know, when I.
You just helped me justify my answer.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to look at the, uh, you know, we had kind of, we've been looking at the end of, uh, end of October, beginning of November as kind of a, you know, as a, as kind of a target, but it's, it's gonna be tricky, the, you know. You told, you, you asked about the, uh, course size, the class sizes at the middle school, and there's some big ones, there's some.
I know.
There's a, a standard one.
And I'll share with you guys, a few parents are very concerned about the class sizes in the middle schools, and just how large they are.
And the high school, so, yeah. Yep, and the problem at the, you know, the one thing that makes it this all easier at the elementary schools is that we can cohort the kids. Once we get to the middle school and high school, the kids are not co-horted, they're, they're, they're cross, you know, they're, they're, you know, they're, they're changing classes every period, and they're, they're with different kids. As for the, as for the stipends, I mean, listen, this is my understanding of this, and, uh, you know, we can, if we have more, uh, follow-up questions on it, um, you know, Ron and I can definitely look into it, but, you know, as the, uh, budget process unfolded and, and we were in a position where we were gonna be cutting a whole bunch of, a whole bunch of items, you know, we put a, we put a list together of things that we were gonna, that we were gonna cut, and then, and that included, um, a number of teachers, administrators, um, you know, particular programs at the high school. And, um, as we've worked through, um, the furloughs, and then, yes, there, you know, we were able to save money this summer in IT and, and custodial help, because we didn't, you know, the schools were closed for so long, our, our folks could do that, um, you know, live. You know, we were able to reallocate money, and we've always, I mean, I always said, or we always said from the beginning that this is the cut list, and whenever we get back, we're gonna try to, we're gonna try to reinstate. So we reinstated, yeah, I think it was four or five, um, teachers, um, the culinary program, and, you know, one of the other pieces we, you know, I know we, we had talked about, was trying to make sure we had money for, uh, for, for clubs. So, um, you know, the, some of the big drivers there were, um, some special ed, well, no, I shouldn't say that, cause the special education, uh, transportation money was, um, is being used for special education. But, you know, the IT, um, the, uh, the custodial help, what, there was another big one, Ron, I think I'm missing off the top of my head.
Did you say transportation? The fifty-five?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, not the special education transportation, but also, um, you know, working with the, uh, working with All-Star for the, uh, you know, the fact that we're gonna be five days less this year, it's gonna save us about, you know, fifty-five thousand dollars. So, again, you know, my understanding from the get-go was, hey, this is our cut list, and anything we can claw back, let's, let's try to, you know, let's try to claw back. So I know it puts us in a, it puts us in a, in a weird position.
I just have, so the ninety, the ninety-two thousand dollars to reinstate the clubs, is that from the three-twenty-three? That's the surplus, that, that's separate?
That has nothing to do with it.
That's from the savings in the current fiscal year. So just to, just to, uh, reiterate, we're still, as a board, or the consensus of the majority of the board, we're still going to the Board of Finance at the next meeting and asking for what we discussed in our last meeting.
Right, so, so I, I just wanna make this clear, because I think there was some confusion after last, last meeting, because we've gotten some feedback after last meeting. The three-twenty-three is from fiscal year that ended on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty. By, we had, those are unexpended funds, by law, those funds reverted back to the town of Monroe. Cause there's some confusion, that people think we have the money, you know, it's our money that we're using. That is not our Monday, money, that ended. That ended, that was fiscal year twenty-twenty, ended June thirtieth, twenty-twenty. Whatever is unexpended from your budget appropriation reverts back to the town. We, as a board, sent a letter that said we'd like to have that money placed in the capital account two, ten-dash-two-forty-eight A. At the last Board of Finance meeting, one of the finance board members asked us, said, hey, listen, if you could have money put back in to your budget, what would you want put back in? That's the discussion as to saying to the Board of Finance, hey, these are the things we would like to see restored, but we don't have that money to restore anything, nor do we have that money to spend. That's not our, you know, we, we have nothing. So what we're doing is offering to the board what we would like to see restored if there was a special appropriation made to the board over and above what our current budget appropriation that was approved and given to us. So I just want to make that clear because some people think that that's money we actually have.
That actually, that actually is, for me personally, much clearer because I thought that the club stipends came from that. And I was like, well, but at the last Board of Ed meeting, we had a whole discussion about we were going to ask for this, but it's not, it's from savings in the, the clubs are coming from savings in the current fiscal year, and the three-twenty-three is going to the ten-two-forty-eight A, and that's a whole separate.
That's a whole separate thing. So we can't, we can't move money from one fiscal year to the next and use it.
Right.
So when we did the budget, so when we finalized the budget, when was that, like two meetings ago, I think it was? When we finalized the final phase three of the budget, when we did that vote, we had at that point said the stipends for clubs and activities was off, and we were voting on that with that already restored, which was two meetings ago. Right. But no, that hasn't, the unaffin, unattend, unexpended funds from June thirtieth has nothing to do with anything in this year's budget. Alan?
Joe, is there any way we could get like a heads up about a situation like this next time? Because it was just kind of.
I'm sorry, Alan, I, what were our heads up about?
About the, um, clubs coming back?
Okay.
Yeah, you could just give us like a heads up.
You got it. You got it.
David?
I think we need to be very careful here, and thank you for making that distinction because the, the waters were getting very murky between last year's budget and this year's budget. So people need to understand the difference and that we have no control over that by law. And as a board, I think we need to be very, very careful about what promises we make this year. Our intentions are all absolutely good with what we'd like to see, but we, we're on a roller coaster ride here. We've got COVID, we have a presidential election, civil unrest. We have a, a court decision that we have to cover kids until they're twenty-two years of age. We don't know what's going to happen. So I think if we're sitting pretty in June, these are all good decisions, but we got to be very careful about making promises and spending money now, and then we're going to be in a deficit in June. People are moving into this town in Groves, we don't know what's going to happen, there's just, there's complete uncertainty with the rest of this school year. And we need to be fiscally responsible and save every penny, um, until the end of the year. That's my opinion, my recommendation. I think we should just hold the course, not make any promises. You know what? If we're sitting on money at the end of the year, then yeah, it's open season, we can, we can talk about these things. But there's so much uncertainty right now. I say we just be very careful with our spending, see what happens until, you know, May, June.
So I, I don't mean to belabor the point, but, so we're still going to the Board of Finance and our, our recommendation is?
Right, we're going to finish that exercise that, again, Steve Kirsch asked us for. The Board of Finance has not made any decision or have even said to us, this is what they intend to do. It was asked by Steve to say, hey, if you had money restored, what would you want restored?
And we're still going with the one furlough day for the unions and the remainder in the special ed reserve. That's our recommendation to the board.
Recommendation only. We have no control if that happens or what the Board of Finance, if that's even what the Board of Finance desires to do. Because I, you know, I, you know.
They may not give it back to us.
Well, I think that, I think they may say just what you just said, we don't know, there is uncertainty, we don't know. We're not making a decision in October. I think we should wait until the spring. And again, I'm not talking for them, I'm just going to say, I agree with you, they're probably going to say, well, let's wait and see what happens because it's too early, we don't know what the future is going to hold.
Right, right, I know there was, there was conversation about them setting up a, a COVID account or a spec, spec ed account.
Well, they had lots of different conversations.
Different ideas, that's all up to them, they don't have to put that three-twenty-three in our ten-two-forty-eight, they can put it wherever they want.
Right, correct.
Ron?
Yes.
How, how much money did the town cover for us in our medical last year's budget? Do you, do you know just a random number?
The medical reserve runout?
Yes.
It's, so in the current year budget, there's appropriated one point five million dollars to cover the deficit in that fund.
That's on top of our budget?
That's on top of the budget. So, um, that entire one point five isn't going to be needed. I think it's going to be closer to, I think it's right around one point four, but that was the runout from the medical reserve fund.
So again, just that everyone has the full picture here, that the town's given us one point four, one point five on top of our budget. So if they take back three-twenty-three, are we really, you know, complaining when they're giving us one point four additional?
It's a very murky water you're swimming in. Eight hundred thousand for COVID, three hundred thousand extra. You've hit three hundred and fifty people for three furlough days each, they're feeling it in their towns, they live in, they're feeling their paychecks. I understand what you're saying, I do. And it's, it's hard, we all have a, a cause that we stick up for. You know, this one's going to be tough for me to swallow because we've all been negotiating, and I, I know, people are laid off, I got it all, I got. But Monroe's history is to go back to the teachers and push them down. And I can show you the history, and I can go back to thirty-five years, I taught. And this is what's tough. This is what's tough. It gets hard for them to swallow every year. And it's just not, it's not a one-time COVID thing. It's not a hundred-year storm. It seems to happen a lot. I wish it was just a hundred-year storm. But I do hear, hear you today, and I do appreciate it, you're right. It, there, this is not an easy.
And I'm not, I'm not saying absolutely no to that, I'm, you know, I'm saying we could be open to all of this, yes, it is.
It's, boy, it's a rock and a hard place.
Right, and, and, you know, the.
Stinks.
The teacher's MOU that we signed does say if there's a surplus, but I think it said, I don't know if anybody has a copy, but didn't it say if there's an excess in federal or state funds? That we, we could, it would go back, there, there was?
No, it was town funds too, I think, I think it read excess funds.
Well, it said, I think it said, it, I don't have it in front, so I don't want to quote something in there.
No, I don't either.
Because then that's going to say something like, oh, they said X, Y, and Z, and if it's not exact, I'm not, you know.
Right, so we, we need to look at all the specifics before we do anything. And Jerry, I'm not, I'm not saying no, I'm just saying that, let's just be a little smart, and then, you know what? Hopefully, we could have a conversation like this at the end of the year.
Yeah.
But we have to see what happens, this is a roller coaster year.
Man, you ain't kidding, Dave.
Yeah? I hear you. That's all, thank you.
Anybody have anything else? All right, Jerry, now do I have a motion to adjourn?
There you go, Jerry.
Second, Christine, thank you. All in favor? Thank you, motion passes.